Since we've been open, we've had over 20,000 people join the Hays Center. And those folks, there are about 4,000 of them that come once a month. In addition to what goes on at the Hays Center is we also are involved in your volunteer program, Mayor's Office of Volunteer Services. And we have, we had 167 folks that participated last year, putting over 33,000 hours of volunteer service to this community. And that's, that's really remarkable as far as I'm concerned. There are a couple of things that I want to bring your attention to. One of them is that, or the main thing is that May the 7th, we are having a Hall of Fame luncheon at the Hays Center. And two of our esteemed residents are being honored by being put in the Senior Citizens Hall of Fame. Tickets are $10 apiece. It starts 11 o'clock at the Hays Center. You need to buy your ticket by this Friday so we can plan enough lunch for everybody. But the two people that are being honored are Artis Boykin, who was a, she worked as a Activity Director for us at the, at both Campus Towers and at Heritage House. She's on your Civil Service Commission and does a wonderful job. And then Murray Witcher, who is an Alderman, who's been on the Senior Citizens Commission for a long time. Both those individuals are being placed in the Hall of Fame, and you'll want to come down and see them be honored. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any.
Thank you, Charlie. You did a wonderful job. Ms. White?
It's not a question. It's a compliment. I'm one of your regulars in the mornings and in the evenings, and the place is always amazing. If you haven't joined and gone, you need to go have a look. It's a cheerful place to be. It's clean. The equipment works well, and it's, it's really a positive thing for our city, and I'm grateful. Thank you for all you and your staff do.
Thank you.
Am I old enough yet, Charlie, to?
You've got another year to go.
Another year, okay. I'm going to join when I get old enough. Would that serve as reading that?
Yes, sir, it will. And I might add, Mayor, I had a meeting with the mayor from Kansas City, and it's, he knows, they've replicated our centers here. The current mayor is the first re-elected mayor that Kansas City has had in some time. And he attributes a great deal of it to the senior center construction and following the model that Charlie has provided us.
We also had the mayor of Oklahoma City and part of his staff and council came and toured because they were going to build something like what we have too. So that's imitation is greatest form of flattery, isn't that what they say?
My recollection is Oklahoma City built four or five replicas. Is that right, Charlie?
Thank you, Charlie Murray. Congratulations. We're all very, very proud of you. You've given your heart and soul to that center, so thank you very much. How about a motion?
Move to accept and file.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Special call, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. An email dated March 19, 2015, from Deputy City Attorney Matthew Fleming to the City Council members. Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, March 23, 2015, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-1555, a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to utilize Federal Aid Arkansas Transportation Alternatives Program funds to construct sidewalks under the Safe Routes to Schools Program for Amboy Elementary and Boone Park Elementary Schools and for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Joe A. Smith. A copy of the proposed resolution was attached for reference, and this is pursuant to Section 2-48-2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, and it was sent to all of our council members.
Move to, move for adoption.
Please.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Unfinished?
O-1510, Alderman Taylor.
I'm going to hold that, please.
Okay.
I have, I might give you all an update on that property out there. We have been in contact with the Salmons. Our attorneys have talked. We are working with the engineers now for a survey to identify exactly where the boundaries of the property are. So everything is going according to plan. So I would anticipate 30, 60 days, maybe, we'll have it all done. So thank you to the Salmons again. Okay, consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, how about a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And instead of pulling one, the R-1548 is on that CDBG program. Joan, if you and Melissa could come up just for a second. Joan, who's been our director for, I don't know, two, three, four years, has done a wonderful job of running that department, has chosen to retire, and this will be her last council meeting. And I have appointed Melissa Irwin, who's right there with her. And Melissa and I have worked together for many, many years. She's been the Assistant Director, and she's the glue over there, right, Joan?
Yes.
And so I wanted to introduce her. I have all the confidence in the world in the job that she can do. She's got a lot of experience, and I know that when we worked in the same building at City Services, she kept me straight. So I'm excited that she's agreed to take that position, and I know she'll make us all proud. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's go on, Ms. Whitby.
New business, R-1552, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1805 Beach Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for abatement of said nuisance.
How about a motion?
Second.
Call a public hearing on 1805 Beach Street. Anyone here to speak on 1805 Beach Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing on a motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1553, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 4105 Alma Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for abatement of said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on, excuse me, 4105 Alma Street.
She's here.
4105, anyone here to speak on that?
Yes.
Okay, please come to the microphone.
The house is, right now, as of now, is being tore down. Jessica Rivera.
Okay, thank you.
That we're over there today working on it. It's supposed to be removed by tomorrow.
Okay. I think the process would be, we'll go ahead and pass this legislation, and then if you remove the house, then what happens, counsel?
Well, we can present.
Okay. How would you prefer to do it? Go ahead and pass it tonight and then bring back another resolution?
I would suggest we go ahead and do that.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll pass the resolution to condemn it. If you tear it down in the next 30 days.
Okay.
Then we'll bring back legislation to uncondemn it, basically.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll be fine.
Well, it's almost down. It should be down the next two or three days.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you ask her to contact our office and let us know?
Would you call the city attorney's office and tell them when the law is cleared?
The number that's on the notice? I think that's probably code. That's code.
We'll write it down for you.
Jason Carter, have a card.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1554, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 2022 Moss Street in the City of North Little Rock.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Call a public hearing on 2022 Moss Street. Anyone here to speak on 2022 Moss Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing on a motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Orders amending Chapter 8 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code to establish regulations for the proper storage and disposal of used and scrapped tires, first reading.
Ms. Fleming, rules placed on a second reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Orders amending Chapter 8 of North Little Rock Municipal Code to establish regulations for the proper storage and disposal of used and scrapped tires, second reading.
Motion.
Move to spin the rule, place it on its third reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code to establish regulations for the proper storage and disposal of used and scrapped tires, third and final reading.
Motion.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions?
Now, will this be up to code enforcement to?
Chief?
To enforce this?
You want to come up?
Because I know that the Fire Marshal has also been in on a lot of the tire storage because it is a fire hazard, so.
This has been a year in the making, and Chief Bradley was in charge of that committee putting that together, so tell us about it.
This has been a coordinated effort between the Fire Marshal, code enforcement, and sanitation so that all three have a piece of this. Some of it will be enforced by code, some by sanitation, and some by the Fire Marshal.
So if someone calls us with a concern or something, how do we know who to call?
Well, I mean, if it relates to, code is going to be the first call. I mean, and for like a tire store that's improper storage, some of the dumping, then this is aimed at trying to curb some of the dumping. I talked to Mr. Ford this morning and asked him about how many tires we picked up and hauled off last year. He said about, he thought about 3,500 tires, and some of them are found in piles of 20 and 40, which we believe those are coming from the used tire stores. And the Fire Marshal is obviously concerned about the way they are stored, and there are actually some properties that have tires stored on them that are not dealers but actually end up storing a mountain of tires. So I think this ordinance deals with all of those situations.
So we're limiting the number that they can have on their actual property or on display and different things like that, so do you not think that that's going to cause them to dump even more because we're going to be watching it?
No, it requires them to participate in the regional recycling, which doesn't cost them anything, and Davis Tire will come by and pick them up. By state law, new tire dealers are required to participate in that.
Yes.
But it did not address the used tire dealers, so they're going to be required to participate in that and keep a record of the disposal of their tires that we can inspect, and it's at no cost to them.
So this gives us the authority to go into their business and look at their books, then?
Well, it requires them to produce records to show the disposal of tires. I mean, we can't go in and look at all their records, but we can ask them for.
I mean, for that record, for their log.
Yes.
So we can go in and ask them for their log, and they're required to have it.
Yes.
And if they don't have it, then they're so fine.
Yes.
Correct? Got you.
Mr. Vouch?
Paragraph 8.1.3, which is the enumeration of the nuisance, it says unauthorized, excessive, or improper accumulation. I think the unauthorized and improper was addressed in there, but how do we, and I may be excessive also, but how do we determine what's excessive? I mean, is there a?
That was a clause that was added by legal, and I'll let Mr. Fleming explain that.
I just may have missed one. I was reading this.
Well, as you recall, when we've worked on other issues involving nuisances, the nuisance definition is very broad, and in an effort to provide guidance for code, we try to have a list of certain enumerated instances. The latest we've done has been outdoor storage. And this particular addition would set forth that these unauthorized, excessive, or improper accumulation of used tires would be considered a nuisance. That would just be a matter of proof that if a ticket was given, then it would be up to code enforcement and the prosecutor to prove, in fact, that the storage was unauthorized, excessive, or improper in the way in which they were stored and kept. Other parts of this sets forth how these things are to be stored, and so if we prove that they weren't stored in accordance with this ordinance, then we would submit that we've met our burden to prove it at such times as it goes to trial.
But it is supportable?
Yes, yes, sir, it is.
Thank you. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Is there an emergency?
There is no emergency clause.
Okay.
And I would point out that Section 4 sets forth, this will go into effect in August.
And next item, O-1524, Alderman Ross?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a tire store in a C4 zone for property located at 2922 Pike Avenue in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to spin the rules and place it on its third and final reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a tire store in a C4 zone for property located at 2922 Pike Avenue in the City of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Move for adoption.
Second. Thank you. Questions?
I have an amendment. Due to the legislation that we just passed, even though there was an emergency, since there was an emergency clause in there, under D, previously planning had allowed up to 30 tires for storage outside, D needs to be amended to 25 tires to match the ordinance that we just approved.
Is that a used tire store?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Well, I, used, new.
Second. On the motion to amend.
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1525, Alderman Height?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a daycare center in an R2 zone for property located at 5301 Summer Tree Drive in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Before I ask for a waiver of all readings, I'd like to add, with your permission, Mayor, Alderman Murray Witcher is named as a sponsor.
Without objection.
Second.
And then I move that we waive all readings.
Second. Still?
Question, Ms. Robinson?
I have a question about it. I'm not against the legislation, but my question is, I, where all daycare centers, home daycares, shall perform a sex offender residence check? And I guess my question would probably be to the city attorney. What, after we pass this and they do the checks, what happens if there's a registered sex offender there? Does the offender have to move? Am I making sense?
You are. I don't know if I can answer that question right off the cuff.
Okay.
But I believe that law is that they're not supposed to be in that area. They may very well have to move. But I'd be happy to confirm that and let you know for sure.
Davis?
To the chief? Chief Davis?
I guess my question to chief, probably a check has not been done already regarding sex offenders near this daycare center. So if this passes tonight and they do the check regarding sex offenders, and if there's a Level 3 or a Level 4 already in that area, does the sex offender have to move? They're already there, if they're already there, I'm saying.
I am not positive on that. I think we need to check because I know there's a couple right there real close that own property, as a matter of fact, that we've been down the road before, so.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of that. That was tonight. Within 2,000 feet of this daycare center?
Right. I will be happy to look into that and give you an answer. I'll give the whole council an answer.
Almost half miles.
Just let me know. I mean, you know, I'm for the daycare.
Right.
But I'm just wondering, like, what if?
Ms. White?
I sought that legislation a couple of years ago, and it was very frustrating to know that it's possible someone could open a home daycare or something else next door and not be aware of a sex offender being there. And the way it was left for me was that it was, it's encumbered upon the daycare owner then to make a decision. I never understood it to be, it was just an informational.
That is correct. I do remember that. That's the way it was, and there was concerns about that.
It was hard, yeah. It was a hard one to know what to do.
So we will look at that, and I'll get with you on that also.
What's your opinion, counselor? I mean, do we need to pass this?
I would suggest we go ahead and pass it, and then, because at such point in time as it's passed, then the applicant can do their due diligence and make that decision, and we can determine whether or not.
Does the applicant get to make that decision, or does DHS make that decision, or do we make that decision?
Well, our requirement here is that they make the check, and then we can answer Alderman Robinson's questions whether or not, if there is one there, there's incumbent upon them to move, or we have to go some other way.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Baxter?
Chief, help me out here. So if I understand, you know, there's a number of apartment buildings near this particular location, six months down the road, who's the, who does that fall on at that point?
And I'm not sure if it's the gym, is that what we're talking about?
It's still Cross Point Baptist Church, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
The applicant is here.
Okay. Go ahead, chief.
Okay, so there will be residential houses around that.
I'm back up to it.
Tanglewood, 56th Street, Wood Street, they're going to fall into that distance.
Would you all like to make a comment on that, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Come to the microphone, please, sir.
Actually, we appreciate that, raising that issue. That's something that we talked about, because we really didn't know which direction to go in a situation like that, so we are stumped as far as what do we do in a case like that. So we really don't know.
Well, should we find out the answers to that before we pass this legislation?
I think we can, I think we should go ahead and pass it. I don't think we should hold it. I think we should go ahead and pass it. And if there's a problem, then the police and the daycare owners will work together to work it out.
Once the daycare is there, I think it, then, and a person who's a 3 or 4 sex offender wants to move in someplace near, then they would be prohibited from moving into there. I think that's under state law. I think the issue that Alderman brings up is whether or not someone's already there. Right.
Ms. White?
And what drove me into this is my background in early childhood, but also, if I was a parent, putting my child in a daycare program, I'd want to know if there was someone in that area where the daycare was. And it does fall back on the owner to check this out. It does, I know.
It will.
It's a tough one.
Thank you.
I don't know.
I think we should move forward on it.
Josh, call. Mr. Witcher?
Let's go forward with it.
Height?
Yeah.
Go forward. Spend all readings?
Spend all readings.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Okay, we've got public comments section. Mr. Ard.
Alderman Ross, it's the best prayer we've had in a long, long time. A thank you very rarely gets sent up, but I admire you for doing that tonight. Thank you.